Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 7th Board of Aldermen meeting. The first order of business is to nominate a board president to reside over this meeting. Do you have a nomination? Alderwoman Savage.
I nominate Alderman Whitcomb.
Whitcomb.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Right on.
Are there any other nominations?
I moved them to close the nominations.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor for Alderman Whitcomb to serve as tonight's president for the Board of Aldermen say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes.
No one.
Sorry.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, everyone. It's been a while since I've seen you all from up here. Let's dive right in. First up, any additions, deletions, or other modifications to the agenda for tonight? Hearing and seeing none, let's move right along. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, which would be September 16th, 2024, which does include an amendment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion, debate? Alderman Heck.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, in regards, under normal circumstances, I have no issues with the minutes this time. I'd just like to point out that under reports to select committees, Alderman Tatiello's Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting from September 11th, she goes through and basically tells what the committee did. There was a motion that was to recommend to the full board. Then there's a very small paragraph where Alderwoman Davis Heck Gillum, we've been called things before, Billy, but I'm not sure we've been called women as far as that goes, expressed that they are not in support of the project. I know myself personally had nothing to do with the support of the project, had more to do with just questions about the project as far as that goes. I can't speak for Alderwoman Davis or Alderman Gillum as far as that goes. And that Alderwoman Tatiello McCann McLaurin Whitcomb all express support for the project. There was a lot of debate, which there was going back and forth. Assistant Engineer Gillum expressed his thoughts. I actually stopped by the next day to speak with Engineer Gillum and asked the question. I thought you had more concerns. He said, I absolutely did have concerns, so thoughts may not be there. And again, I don't want to change the minutes, but I would like it to be accurate as far as that goes. And Treasurer Markowski expressed that the cost would impact the taxpayers. There's just no information. I mean, with $4.9 million project turning to $7.2 million, I don't want to tell the clerk how to do her job, but there seems to be just missing information there, and I would like it to be known on record that the next set of minutes just address those concerns. If I could, please respectfully.
Thank you, Alderman Heck. Any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion, it's been seconded.
Was that an amendment to the minutes?
I am looking for the minutes to reflect that there are some grammatical issues, there are also some comments that are not actually true comments. I wanted to express my comment that the project itself, it's not that I didn't support the project, I had a fair amount of questions, as I think other folks did, that we weren't able to get answered. So I just think that if the public is looking at these things, I wanted to just be a true representation of how that meeting was and how the report was afterwards.
So those will be added to the minutes, am I correct?
Yeah, so Alderman Heck, just to clarify, your request is to add or offer an amendment to these minutes to update it, to reflect?
I'm looking for clearer clarification in regards. Yes.
So the point of where the motion should be, accept the minutes as amended?
As amended, yes. All right, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, but Alderman Heck has offered to an amendment to accept the amended minutes from the previous meeting, September 16th, 2024, as amended, to reflect the changes outlined. Do you have a second to that?
That's correct.
Awesome. Any other questions, comments, debate? Hearing and seeing none, I believe we are voting to accept the amendment to the minutes, and I think we have to take it again.
That's correct.
Perfect. All right, so hearing nothing else, all those in favor of accepting Alderman Heck's amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And now?
Minutes as amended.
A motion to accept the minutes of the September 16th, 2024 Board of Aldermen meeting to include the original amendment as well as the amendment just approved by Alderman Heck. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
So moved, second. Any questions, comments, debate on that? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.
Sorry, Matt.
Not a problem. That brings us to communications from the mayor, Acting Mayor Davis.
So Mayor Dunn just reached out, and he has for your consideration an appointment to the Rutland Redevelopment Authority. Her name is Lori Erner, and asked that you customary table this nomination until our next Board of Aldermen meeting.
So moved.
We have to suspend the rules? Don't we have to suspend the rules?
We should suspend the rules.
Second.
Question for the attorney, I don't believe we can suspend the rules based on our numbers.
Correct, we don't have enough people to suspend the rules at this meeting. My understanding, though, was for this particular motion, historically, the rules would not need to be suspended.
Correct, it's to table the motion.
Yes.
That's correct. So no action is taken.
Right, correct.
In which for the purpose of this, it's just a simple majority.
So I refer back to what I said prior to all this, so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. So we have a motion, it's been seconded, to table the nomination of Lori Erner to the Rutland Redevelopment Authority. But all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Alderman.
Very good, thank you, Alderman Davis. We are moving next to consideration of special event permit requests, of which we have none. So this will bring us to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Up first, we have Assistant Engineer Gillen, referral to committee land acquisition, and I believe here he is.
So it's come to my attention that there's two independent privately owned parcels that may come up for sale in the near term. If they were to be developed, there could be some potential adverse impacts to our water treatment and distribution system. So I guess I thought it'd be in our best interest to have a detailed discussion at the committee level, so I could outline these parcels, their location, the impacts. So I'm just looking for a motion to refer the discussion of land acquisition to protect the water treatment and distribution systems to the Public Works Committee.
Alderman Gillum?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any comments, questions, debate on this?
Just a point of order, will we do go in committee, will we go in executive session? Because it could put the city at disadvantage when we're talking about land acquisition.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion, it has been seconded, but all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. This is referred to the Public Works Committee. Thank you. All right, this brings us next to Treasurer Markowski, who has two items on the agenda. Up first, a review of the Pension Committee meeting of September 24th, 2024. Treasurer Markowski.
Hi, thank you. The Pension Committee met on the 24th, and so I wanted to give an update of the meeting. We had several members of the public, actually, board members, and we had Eric Shait from Newport Group, the plan act, he serves as the plan actuary. So he does evaluation of the plan assets annually, really looking at what progress are we making? Here's evaluation, and what are we doing to address the funding issues? And we all know the funding issues, and when we do the city budget, we have a large extra expense in there to address that underfunding. But we meet with the actuary at least annually for this, we prepared, and the information that he provides unfortunately is as of 1/124, so it's a little late getting there, and I feel like we'll be doing the next one very soon. So when you think of the city pension, the city pension covers both the city and the school obligations. So as of January 1st, the pension had total assets of $111 million collectively, citywide, with accrued liability, pension benefits that have accrued of $141 million. And there, then you have a $29 million total underfunded position. This is city and school. And when we go over it with the actuary, we go over each one, but I thought for tonight, let's start with the big, the whole pension, and then I'll highlight the funding for the school and the city. So of that $29 million unfunded position, the city's balance is $21 million of that, and the school is $8 million of that. The pension as a whole has a total funding of 92%. The city portion of the pension has a 57% funding position. So the recommended contributions for the city, based on the actuary report, is $2.08 million. So while we're making progress, we're not meeting that recommended amount, so we, just, I just want to go over, this is the discussion at the committee level about where we stand with the pension. So in the report that we were looking at, we had contributions of 1.5 million for this city. It only reflected, we, the city had made last year with the local option tax, take advantage of that, let's put a little bit more toward that, try to get up to that recommended amount. So the report that we were looking at hadn't really realized a whole year of those contributions. So it'll take a few years till we see that impact, but, so I just wanted to highlight that. The school, the recommended contribution of 1.8 million, the school was able to make more than that, 2.7 million, and the plan on the school side is 91% funded. In the general fund budget, and I'm going to highlight it because it's there, is a million dollar line item. In addition to everything that we do for each department, there's a million dollar line item to address this underfunded position. As we've discussed before, the city pension is closed to new participants, so as of the valuation, there were 47 active participants, 28 terminated, that haven't drawn their pension, and 146 that are in pay status. On the city, well, I can say that the pension is very active because it takes a bit of my time. On the school side, there are 453 active participants, 254 terminated, inactive, that haven't drawn benefits, and 354 that are retired that are in the pay status. So very active pension on the city side. We looked at the market value of the plan, so when you're looking at 1/124, it was $111 million. As of the date of our meeting, it was up to $118 million. So, and we looked at market values in the plan, and we can see the progress, even though we're paying out about eight or nine million in benefits, and we're only contributing six million there, so, but we're seeing progress. The plan is still growing, even though we're not meeting all of that. We had some discussion, someone asked, what, where, how do we get here? You know, I did, you know, we talked about it that night, really, over a course of a number, a number of years of not adequately funding the pension, that's how we got here. So it's so important that we just remember at the budget, when it's very difficult to try to cut taxes, that this is something, this is an obligation, that it's not on our debt schedule, but it's debt, isn't it? Anyway, we talked about those things at the meeting, and I thank everyone on the board who was able to attend. Anything else that I have forgotten, that I didn't add to this discussion? I just went over the reports and the minutes, but just wanted to share that with everyone.
Questions from members of the board for Treasurer Markowski?
I just have a comment, I just want to thank Mary for all her hard work that she does on this subject.
Oh, thank you.
There's like a light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, I think it's there. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you. Before we move on, Treasurer Markowski, might you be looking for a referral to the Finance Committee to discuss potentially increasing the funding from the local option tax towards the pension deficit?
Yes, if someone would want to make that motion, I think that would be great.
I'd make a motion to send to the Finance Committee a discussion of increasing the percentage of the local option tax that is allocated to the pension deficit.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any comments, questions?
If I may, Mary, I think somewheres within the budget, are we now putting about $1 million towards the pension?
Yes.
Is that what's budgeted? Did I see that correctly? Is it $1 million?
Yes, it is. We're on a schedule with the actuary, we increase that, we increase that amount by one and a half percent annually, so you have that number, and then you have, in each department, there's also a funding, employer funding, so it's throughout the budget.
Alderman Gillum?
Just for people at home, we're in good shape. I mean, we're a B, not a A, but we're not a C, right?
Yes, we're in good shape, and I always ask, what can we do differently? And the answer for the city is keep funding, and as Alderman Adams said, let's refer it to committee and look, see if we can do more.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, we're in decent shape. We're in a position where, I mean, I guess all I can really surmise is that money was spent that wasn't had, and I just want to caution going forward, that practice, where we find something shiny and hop on it before we take care of what we're responsible for.
Thank you, Alderman Adams. Other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Oh, sorry.
Matt, if I may, and I don't think this is an issue, but Megan, you may tell me, I'm a, I am a member of the pension, I'm not a recipient of the pension, so I just wanted to outline that at some point. Hopefully down the road, I will collect my pension from the city here, but I just wanted to point that out. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Heck.
Should not impact the referral to the committee, so.
Perfect. All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer the pension, or payments to the pension to the Finance Committee. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And Treasurer Markowski, you had additional information regarding the Johnson Control Energy Project, there was a memo submitted in the packet.
Okay, thank you. And I sent a memo to the board, and my goal is really to provide a little bit more of an overview of the project. I spoke with the mayor several times since the last meeting, and I really had some concerns that there were some questions that left, that were left unanswered. And this project is a $4.9 million investment in solar, weatherization, and that's a big project for the city. And I didn't feel that the scope really, the discussion didn't meet the, really, this is a big project, so I don't want it to just go without answering those questions that were asked. I also provided to the board, I'm going to do the Q and A, but I thought it was interesting, I had pulled together some information, and I had actually asked JCI, like, I don't work in number of gigabytes or whatever that, whatever we're saving, I work in dollars. So like, what does it mean for each building that we have? What's the cost of this project per facility? So I was able to get that from them, and so I shared that with the board. So the project covers 10 city buildings, one, two, three, eight, nine, 10 different facilities, and then streetlights. $3 million of the project is solar. That's a considerable part of the project. Most of it is in, covered at the Giorgetti Rink, the recreation department, which is the Core Cell Building, and the community center. But it does encompass quite a bit, and I, forgive me, I just want to find my notes because I did a little bit. So 64% of this project, a $4.9 million project, cost is solar. 3.9%, so 4% is lighting. 12% weatherization. A small percentage in pipe and valve insulation. A significant, 3% is system controls modification, not quite sure, there's a lot of details in the contract that cover a lot of this. Mechanical system replacements, 370,000, 7.5% of the project. Mechanical upgrades, HVAC, those kind of things, 6.4%. And then streetlights is a small, small part of the project at 1.6%. So it is, it's a big project for the city. But there were some questions that went unanswered, so I did, in working with the mayor, the mayor, Mayor Dunn just reached out to JCI and asked some of those questions. One of them was regarding the longevity of the equipment in the process. Is it still, what's the value, is it going to last? What's the value beyond 20 years? What, you know, what are we going to do with this? The answer from JCI is solar panels typically have a life of approximately 30 years. So 20 years, after we pay for this for 20 years, maybe 10 years, we're actually going to reap those right, well, you're shaking your head, so I don't know, but this is what I'm told, so we'll see.
It's a grip. Technology is not.
Well, I was thinking that as well, as when you talk about the technology, I would assume in 20 years, the technology on this has changed quite a bit too, right? So we'll see.
As far as I know, the only person in the room in the industry, and this is absolutely a pit hole, it's not.
Oh, I wished you were here, but, we all wish you were here, but, so then the other question is, how does the accounting work? How do we save the money? That, to me, was the key question, which said, we don't have enough information, we need to talk this over. How do we pay for this? What I'm understanding is, we will budget for electricity, fuel, and we will continue to budget for those items, and the solar credits and the savings, that's how we're going to pay for it. That unspent, so we'll always budget for what the cost is, the amount that's unspent will be how we pay for that. I'm trying to be simplistic on how this is going to work. I don't know how it will work on a fuel bill, I'm more familiar with solar credits because we have a couple of arrangements now. But that's the way it's going, it'll be interesting through this budget process, I think, as we all go through how to navigate and how to budget for this. Now, the contract with JCI has a guarantee from them, you're going to meet those savings, and if you don't, we're going to help you pay for them. So that's a good thing. So for 20 years, we're going to be budgeting, we're going to be getting those savings, they're going to pay for this project, so we'll have $3 million in solar panels, and some upgrades, and improvements to buildings. So there are benefits to the project, but I thought that was important, and I hope I've answered that question as best that I can. I think we'll learn more as we go. There were some concerns about the limits, remember when we saw the schedule, we're only saving $5,000 a year? It's like, we're going through all this to save $5,000 a year, it seemed crazy. And in the event JCI does not meet the contracted energy savings guarantee, they will compensate the city for this shortfall. So it's constantly, you're always working with JCI, valuing, what are you getting for credits, and are you meeting those guaranteed savings? So it will be a long-term relationship. I'm not sure if I answered that question well, I'm doing the best that I can with what I was given, so unless you...
I realize I wasn't here, but I want to add some commentary to that. The way that the solar subsidies and credits work is they're only active as long as they're active. So if Green Mountain Power or the government stops offering those subsidies, or stops offering higher rate for energy that is created via photovoltaic panels, then all of the numbers that you have based all of this on are out the window. That $5,000 is absolutely not enough of a cushion to ensure me that we are all going to be above water at the end of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Adams. Alderman Heck?
So we tried, Mary, a couple weeks ago to, you know, get some questions answered, and again, it's got nothing to do with the project, it's got to do with the process network, I hear about process all the time. I had questions in regards to the procurement aspect of this, based on how the charter is written, and if it was followed correctly. But it's, I have seen in my history, at the water treatment plant, we had put a brand-new roof on there, all of a sudden, the roof became compromised in some capacity, construction company went belly up, we had to put a new roof on again, I think it cost the voters $5 million to go back in and do that, that project. We've seen things with Fathom and metering companies, and, you know, they were coming in, and they promised X and Y and Z, and next thing you know, they're out of business. Adam definitely knows a heck of a lot more about the electricity aspect of things, and what may happen, you know, out there and stuff. There's just a lot of questions, and there are no guarantees in regards to longevity and what's going to happen. I did get with attorney Le Chance, and I shared my concerns, and she said that she did her due diligence in making sure the contract had plausible ins and outs and those kind of things. I've requested a copy of the contract, which I've been promised I will be getting shortly here, as far as that goes, because I'd like to take a look at that signed aspect of those things. But there are questions, and if I may, Mary, respectfully, it's not, it's not a $4.9 million project, it's actually a $7.2 million contract or project when we get done with this, by the time we get done paying things. So I'm not against green, I'm not against solar, I'm not against, you know, infrastructure improvements within the municipality, but I think that we could look at this maybe at a building or two at a time, and to be honest with you, I would have liked to have learned more about the Giorgetti, the ice rink capacity, and what we could have done up there, and how we might have been able to put more money in there. Do we necessarily have to make money? In order to make money, you have to invest money, and I think, you know, we're going to have to do that rink over and stuff. So there was a lot of questions, and it was really sad that we weren't able to just hold off for, you know, a week or two, and I understand there's timelines and those kind of things, but $7.2 million is just something that we can't sneeze at, and hope that we're going to make a little bit of money at, or we're going to be able to recover the costs, because, you know, signing off on those things, we've already seen, there is a history of things going wrong, and it may not work out. So I have serious concerns still, and as I stated, the procurement aspect of it, if it was followed the way it's supposed to have been followed by charter and other questions that I've been delving into, and at this point, I'm not sure, so.
Thank you, Alderman Heck. I have Alderman McCann and Alderman Adams.
Mr. President, there's a lot of points here being repeated from our last meeting, and as far as I know, there's not a motion on the floor to be debated.
There doesn't need to be a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Sorry to tell you.
Alderman McCann, Alderman Adams?
Yeah, I would just encourage, as part of this larger conversation, Sun Commons parent company recently declared bankruptcy, I would encourage anybody who is interested in what I'm talking about to do some research into the situation that Sun Commons customers have found themselves in because of something that happened that was out of their hands, but they had a contract with a company that went under.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum.
My concern with the treasurer is the same. We, I don't know if she's seen the contract, but we, as the board, have not seen the contract. And are those issues in the contract to protect us from harm? So I don't know. So those are the issues are still out there.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. If no one else, Treasurer Markowski, do you have more?
I did want to finish because we did just a little bit more. Oh, we, there was a concern about system maintenance, and we should really be concerned about this because we have a facility, the recreation facility, that has solar panels on it that are in their ninth year of life, that are not working, that are not working on the building and need to be removed.
We're going to do better with the ones that we get later, Mary.
Part of this project will be to redo that entire roof on that, so that's, we're going to get a new roof, but then we're going to put solar on it. But first, we got to figure...
to get a new roof, but then we're going to put solar on it, but first we got to figure out how to get the old stuff off, because that, I did see in the contract, is a cost to the city. I don't know, I know that, I, I don't, I can't.
Sorry, I, I can speak to that if.
Yes.
I might be.
Please.
So that, the solar panels that are currently on there are, I believe, the property of GMP, and we are currently working with them to get them removed. It should, should not incur an additional cost to the city based under that contract, but that is up for discussion right now, so I just thought I'd.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. So the answer to the question was, after these systems are installed, what is the process for maintenance at year eight outside of the warranty? What if a motor goes? What would the process be? And JCI has the ability to offer preventive maintenance and a full-service program if the city desires, so that, that's the answer to that one.
But that's an additional cost, correct?
I, I believe so, if we were going to get, I can assume that if we needed another contract, but I also asked what percent, I couldn't get a clear answer of, and I guess there probably isn't one, but within the project, JCI has expenses, so they, that's how they get paid, like, they're doing the contracting and everything, so throughout the project, a percentage of this, that, and, so I don't have a number for that, but that answer, and then there was, is, is or is not a new roof included in, at the recreation center, and yes, it was, and that's where we got the answer about the solar panels that are existing. So what I do know is the contract was reviewed, this was the meeting of the sixteenth, I think, reviewed, city attorney review, and I think you had outside counsel as well, I'm not sure, reviewing the contract, because we worry about the risks to the city, what's our protection, and the contract was signed on September thirtieth, and I was here tonight just to provide information. This, you know, this has gone through the Environmental Sustainability Committee, I have a meeting tomorrow with Tyler Richardson from the mayor's office to discuss the financing with the project, so this will end up in the finance committee or at the board level as we review, review the financing. I'm incredibly concerned tonight with the comments from Alderman Adams, and I wonder how we navigate, like, if we have now approved it, we have a signed contract, and we have some serious concerns with that, this, I, I wasn't prepared for that, but what do we do with it?
Alderman McCann.
I think there's, maybe not equally strong, but there are opposing concerns about the status quo. Climate change is real, it's human cause, the more we can move away from relying on fossil fuels or excessive use of fossil fuels, the better it's going to be for us in the long term, both as a city and at a broader scale, and I think it's hard to weigh those things in against some of these other concerns, but we need to make sure we account for them.
And I don't, I don't disagree with that, but when you look at this, if you really know about the infrastructure of these city buildings, the wastewater treatment plant is probably the biggest suck of energy and fuel that we have. I mean, they're, they're, they basically have to bring a truckload of fuel to that plant every single day or every other day, because of what they have to do, how they have to process the waste, and those kind of things. I mean, there's not a solar panel going on top of there, I would think if there was a building that was looking for energy efficiency or upgrading, I can tell you right now, we have an electrician, a part-time electrician that spends more time down there, forty hours a week, just trying to put everything back together. You know, there's definitely possibilities to utilize infrastructure for solar and, and savings as far as that goes, why the wastewater treatment plant would be there, I mean, that plant definitely needs to be retrofitted to be, be brought up to more technological advances in regards to solar, or whatever it might be. I mean, some of the other buildings and stuff, I'm, it's fine, like I said, I'm not against this project, but there's things out there that we could probably have done, or we can do, to better utilize that money. You know, if, if you're talking about a four-point-nine-million to seven-point-two, you're talking about two-point-three-million dollars that the taxpayers will be paying out in excess to what their utility bills would have been over the twenty years. What could we have done with that money as far as that goes? So there's, there's, there's some concern in regards to, you know, the funding aspect of it, and is it the best utilization of taxpayer dollars, I guess, at the end of the day?
Alderman Savage, and then Alderman McCann.
Question for Tricia Markowski, were you able to talk to anyone in Rutland City Public Schools about their?
I did not, I know that, I really, last meeting, I really was under the impression that as we're talking tonight, we might be looking at doing this in phases. I didn't do my homework on it, and I apologize to you, and I apologize to the public, because this is a big project, but it's, but that's what we have that's in front of us, that's approved, and the school, I know that Ted Plameno's from the school is very happy with the arrangement. I spoke with the auditors that I work with, this is complicated, the accounting for this is very, very complicated. They're not telling me if this is a good project or not, that's not what I'm asking, I'm like, how do I account for it? Because we have a general fund that's going to fund some of this, we also have a water fund, a sewer fund, I'm not sure that the savings are going to match where the money goes, so we have to account for it in all three of those funds, so it is complicated, so I raised those questions. Fortunately, the auditors that we have have worked through it with the school side, so they're well-versed in how the JCI contracts work, so that will help me, I think, in the accounting side.
Thank you, Tricia Markowski. Alderman McCann.
Yeah, to clarify, the, the four-point-nine, or whatever the number is, million-dollar outlay for implementation, and then the additional funds to cover the financing costs over the, the life of the contract are rolled in and included, and compared to what our planned utility costs would be, so the, the two or three million or so is not above and beyond what the city would already be paying, based on the estimates from Johnson Controls, that is wrapped into that overall cost, and their estimation is that we would be paying fifty-five-hundred dollars less per month on average over the next twenty years, and that's without some additional favorable information that has been brought forth. Since then, some additional rebates, some improvements in the, the interest rates for the financing component of it, so I, I just want to make sure we understand those numbers.
Alderman Gillum.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we suggest to the mayor that we tag the budget, so when we go through the budget process, all these projects are tagged in the budget so we can actually see it. So when each committee is going through the budget, we know what we're looking at, so.
Just for clarification, Alderman Gillum, in relation to this project, that as we can, the motion would be to recommend to the mayor, that as he develops the budget for the next fiscal year, that anything associated with the Johnson Controls project would be highlighted or tagged.
Highlighted in the budget, that's correct, that's the motion. I so move.
Second.
Second? All right, so the motion's been seconded to recommend to the mayor that as he develops the fiscal year 2026, oh wow, that, that he clearly highlights or denotes within the budget where Johnson Controls' impact is present relative to this project. Any questions, thoughts, hearing is seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Tricia Markowski, perhaps a question for you?
Mm-hmm.
It sounded as though there may have been within this a referral to finance, the contract? Or is that premature at this point?
Could we refer to finance, the financing for this project? Because I think if I wait till the next meeting, it's, I mean, I, we have a meeting tomorrow, I don't know where that's going to take us, so could we refer it to finance, so it's there when we're ready to review the financing for this project?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer the Johnson's Control Contract and Financing to the Finance Committee. Any, Alderman Heck?
If I, if I just may, Mary, I don't disagree, if we could refer the signed contract.
Agreed.
By, I want to make sure that it's, it's the contract that's been signed by the mayor, so if we could just stipulate that it's the signed contract by Mayor Dunjust.
Okay.
That's an amendment.
Second, just go with that, okay. So we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer to the Finance Committee the signed contract with Johnson Controls, and to, and to refer the, the discussion of financing to the Finance Committee. Any questions, comments, feedback on that? Hearing is seeing none, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, if there are no, no other questions, really, my report, the purpose was information only, so, and I thank you.
Thank you, Tricia Markowski. This takes us to reports of standing committees, Alderman Davis, and in her place, as she is acting mayor, will be Alderman Gillum, reading the Public Safety Meeting from October first, 2024. Alderman Gillum.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee met on ten to twenty-four, five-thirty, members present, Alderman Gillum, Tadio, Wickham, and Chair Davis. Also present were President Talbot, Chief Lovett, Alderman Heck, Andrew and Luke from the Building and Zoning Department. The topic was street naming and numbering. The committee was shown multiple maps showing some of the public safety concerns with the enhanced nine-one-one. Many of the streets had duplicate addresses, identical road names, out of sequence even in odd numbers on the same side of the street, unnumbered properties. These issues were a concern that may cause emergency response delays. The city will look to resolve these issues first internally. There was some discussion about the impact on the citywide change of re, readdressing the base of a thousand, of the scale will be, will be addressed by the committee of the whole as either the board chooses to take any action. Chief Lovett brought up the fact that there are not street numbers that are well-displed or visible at night. The use of place cards were discussed, the city will begin to require them on new buildings when the certification of occupancy is required. The cost is approximately twelve dollars and ninety-five cents to be paid by the homeowner or the property owner. The discussion also related to either the policy or the ordinance needs a committee, need the committee felt for enforcement purposes of the ordinance was needed. A motion to refer the Charter and Ordinance Committee the issue of street naming and numbering to develop, to develop an ordinance and related fees. Andrew and Luke will currently work on the ordinance, the motion passed four to one, and I so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, any comments, questions, discussion, Alderman McCann.
Yeah, thank you, sorry I wasn't able to, to make the meeting. So the, the referral would be to create an ordinance that requires sort of a standardization for numbering on or in front of a house?
That's correct.
Okay, so not, would it be sort of identical, like the green sign with the white number, and everybody would look exactly the same? Or is it just a level of readability, do we know?
I think, I think they need to come up with a policy, they need to, they need to come up with a policy and put it in the ordinance and make it a rule, so when new properties comes in, or properties turn over, that these signs will be on there, so it's visible for fire protection and police and EMS.
Gotcha, thank you.
I don't want to speak to this, but I'm going to anyways. So I think the issue is, is before the committee of the whole, because we were informed that if this became a citywide change, it would affect folks who have a mortgage. If they were having to change their street name and number, they would have to go through the mortgage company, there was cost involved, there's a lot of problems. So that's a discussion that will be had at the committee of the whole, whether we want to do this citywide, or whether we just want to take it on when a new, a new house is built, or a new ownership occurs, or when a certificate of occupancy occurs necessary for an apartment or housing.
Alderman Heck. If I may, I want to follow up with what Alderman Davis just said, and there is some concern in regards, E911, we've been working on numbering streets, name streets, and this for quite some time, and I'm not sure why, but all of a sudden here, within the administration, everything's got to be like the entire entity, you know, every building, or every street, however it's going to be, and I share the concern that doing this project would, would create chaos for residents, and it was actually brought up in the meeting, well, we can put it to the voters and let the voters decide, and the response that I heard, I was, I was actually shocked, because it wasn't so much that they were saying, we're going to let the voters vote on this, it was like, they're not capable of doing this, we're going to, we're going to make them do this, and that's not the kind of approach that I think that we need. I think that there is, there are situations out there where numerical numbers need to be changed, I don't have a problem with those kind of things, but we've been, we have gone through this one time before, I'm not sure why all of a sudden we have to look at it, but sending it to Charter and Ordinance to draft language is not where I'm ready to go yet. I think that there needs to be more input, some more insight in regards to, you know, why exactly, or what if we don't? I mean, we've seen dispatchers, we had a local dispatcher, it went away and it, it created chaos, but people still respond, fire departments still get to go where they need to go, ambulances, those kind of things, there's always going to be the anomaly where things may not be exactly perfect, but I'm, I'm kind of taking a look at, to make this kind of change, how is it going to affect people? And it will affect you in a lot greater capacity than just changing two, four, six, eight to one, three, seven, nine, however it's going to be, so I'm not ready for the Charter and Ordinance aspect of it, so I hate that my fellow colleagues know, I'm going to vote no on this, which is going to automatically send it back, but you'll get another bite at the apple here on the seventeenth, and whatever you folks want to do at that point in time, I'm just not ready to go there at this point, and I wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Heck.
Yeah, to, to clarify here, I guess, I, I thought the motion here was specifically about requiring visible numbering, or a standard for readability of current street numbers, and not about renumbering, so I asked the.
That's, that's my understanding what the motion was, was not to renumber, but to put an ordinance out that we would have a standard where the number goes on the door, so when, when the emergency services are coming to the area, they know they're looking at one particular, it needs to be so many inches from the center door, or whatever, or it would illuminate when lights hit it, things like that, those are the things we've got to talk about, but it's not, you know, policy yet, it needs to go in the Charter and Ordinance to flush it out.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Anyone else?
I do want to make a comment, and I, I think the committee was very cautious, because we're talking about, is it eighty-seven-hundred properties in Rutland City?
Sixty-six-hundred parcels, I think.
Right. So for everybody to get a new numbering system in the city, we're talking about, you know, your, your titles have to be changed, your bank statements have to be changed, because your addresses are changing, so there's a, it's a big deal for the taxpayers to go through this big change. So I think the, the second motion will address to deal with the little issues that we have, the streets that are not working properly, to fix those first, before we get into a citywide thing.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Any other questions, comments, debate? If not, we have a motion, it's been seconded, and just to repeat that motion, it's to refer to Charter and Ordinance the issues of street naming and numbering to develop an ordinance and fees. If there's no further comment, discussion, debate, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Alderman Gillum, back to you.
Okay. The second motion is to approve the requirements of a place card for new development and request for certification of occupancy to be paid by the homeowner, again, at the cost of twelve dollars and ninety-five cents, and I so move, the motion carries four zero out of committee.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, that is to approve the requirement of place cards for new developments and request for a certificate of occupancy to be paid by the homeowner at the cost of twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. Motion's been made, it has been seconded, any questions, comments, debate?
I'll just apologize, I, I was misunderstanding on the last motion, that I thought we were then discussing the placards component, so.
And this motion here, I, I absolutely have no problem with as far as that goes, the other one, when the motion says, we're going to, you know, the issues of street naming and numbering, that's where I was, that's where I was looking at, but the placards, placards are no problem. Thank you.
Alderman Gillum.
The twelve ninety-five, I assume that's the current cost of a placard?
That, that is my understanding, what I heard from the, from the other towns, like Mendon.
Do we want this motion to say twelve ninety-five, or the current cost of a placard? Because as time goes on. time goes on, the cost of these placards is going to go up. Who's going to be responsible for what's beyond $12.95?
So Alderman Barbara Gallo, just so I have it correct, you're offering an amendment to this to add the cost of $12.95 or?
Change that to current cost of a placard.
Yep. Okay. So to strike $12.95 to current cost of placard.
That protects everybody, I believe.
I'm sorry, I'm letting you.
That what you want?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay.
So we, Alderman Barbara Gallo has offered an amendment.
That's an amendment to the motion, correct.
The motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Vote on that.
Second? All right. So we have an amendment to the motion that has been seconded, and that would be to strike from this, $12.95 is the explicit cost, and revise it with the language of cost of, current cost of placard. Any questions, comments, debate? Alderman McCann.
Yeah. Where does this requirement go?
That's what, so what was requested for the committee for the renaming and street number? It was not citywide. It was only to develop an ordinance for new builds or certificate of occupancy. This motion would allow the Building and Zoning Department to start requiring the placards and for the homeowners to pay that cost. The cost of $12.95 came from Building and Zoning to the committee.
Is that?
So it is not, the, the referral to charter and ordinance was not for citywide, only for new build or certificate.
Okay.
And then this is, and the fee would have been attached in the charter and ordinance, an ordinance if it had been developed. So they're starting, Building and Zoning is trying to work with emergency services now to have properties that are, and I'm sorry, Andrew had said he was going to send you the maps that were given to us in committee. And I will ask him to forward those because it'll make more sense.
More sense.
So there was a number of properties that were all listed. And one was Door Drive, I believe. And it was all 215 Door Drive. And there was like eight houses. And they all had the same number. And the police, or excuse me, the fire chief Lovett clearly stated that, you know, folks like us, they, they know where people are, but not everybody does. And there is going to be unfortunately, sometimes a delay in an emergency service. So they wanted to start looking at those properties that currently have a problem. And in order to do that, for enforcement purposes, they needed an ordinance and a fee. And that's what, that, that's what the initial referral was that was voted down.
Okay. So, so then this one, the requirement to have placards, not, not having any renumbering, is that something that is documented in a policy? Is that something that's documented in, in ordinance?
It would have been, if referred, documented in the ordinance.
So how do we create a requirement if it's not?
Next, in two weeks.
In two weeks.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just so clarification, it's probably, was there six or eight streets that are, are there problem trials? Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes. Like Campbell Road and Door Drive have four or five properties that have multiple same numbers in a complex. That's very difficult for emergency services. When they drive in, okay, it's 155, which one?
Sure.
So those are easy to fix. Those are low fruit. We can fix those immediately. But we were in the committee, we're really concerned about doing the whole city. That was not the angle here. The angle is to correct the problem issues. Like Campbell Road, Rutland Town's got numbers going one way and ours go the other way. And they don't coincide with, if you're emergency management going up there, it'd be very difficult to figure out which house you're trying to get to.
So I guess if this item is something that we're going to have to revisit anyway, it doesn't make sense to pass it tonight. So I think I'm going to vote no on this one so we can come back to it if there's a need to revisit it in two weeks.
Thank you, Alderman McCann. We currently have an amendment to this motion.
Have to take care of the amendment first.
Unless, of course, he who offered the amendment would like to withdraw it, knowing where we're going.
If it's going to go back to committee, I'll withdraw it.
All right. The amendment has been withdrawn, which leaves us with the motion of approve the requirements of place cards for new development and the request for a certificate of occupancy to be paid by the homeowner at the cost of $12.95. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed?
No.
And this fails. Thank you, everyone. Alderman Gillum, anything else?
Yes. This issue will remain in committee. Well, I'm reading the minutes. Respectfully, Alderman Davis, Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. This brings us to reports of select committees, of which we have none. We have no reports of representatives. There are no petitions, letters, or miscellaneous communications. There's nothing for the Board of Control Commissioners.
Mr. President, can I add two things under miscellaneous?
Under miscellaneous motions?
Yes.
We are almost there.
Oh, sorry.
Because we have nothing under the Board of Cannabis Commissioners. Unfinished business?
Oh, yeah. I have one of those, too.
Unfinished business. Alderman McCann.
Thank you. So the winter parking ban has been discussed a number of times by the Traffic Committee. There is consensus in that committee that an adjustment needs to be made and that the police department would generally be willing to enforce a new winter parking management system that would be most effective for meeting the needs of the city public works needs when road salt needs to be applied or when snow needs to be plowed. I'm hoping to discuss these items further with public works staff before making a referral of the issue either to public works committee or to charter and ordinance to finalize those suggestions and language for an updated winter parking ban language, just for information.
All right. So it's just for information, not a referral?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman McCann. Any other unfinished business? This takes us to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Alderman McCann.
Thank you. If I may, I've got two. One, I just wanted to share, so the Rutland Creek path is having a ribbon cutting on October 18th at 11:00 a.m., I believe. So at Meadow Street Park, if anybody's available, that'd be a great thing to come and help celebrate. And then another one, recently, the board approved a social media guidance for the Board of Aldermen. Since then, some members of the public have expressed concerns that the same First Amendment related best practices that we're suggesting for board members are not necessarily being practiced by city departments on some of the social media pages. And I don't think that's out of anything nefarious. It's just sort of as we kind of navigate this whole realm. So I'd like to refer the creation of a social media policy for city staff to the Human Resources Director, if that's not something she's already working on.
Let our Human Resources Director speak to that. Someone wants me to speak for you, Ellen?
Okay.
We need a second before we start talking here.
Sorry.
Your motion, second?
I'll second it.
Wait, your motion's been seconded. Tricia, another chance.
Thank you. Sorry. I did not mean to interrupt. I was just going to clarify that it, to say that it isn't strictly necessary. We're already in process and working on one for employees.
Thank you. I will withdraw my motion.
Motion withdrawn.
Second or agreed?
Yes. Yes, he has.
I'm just helping you here.
He looks like he agrees. Are there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Hearing, and maybe there is something from the attorney?
I wasn't sure. Tracy, did you have?
Well, I'm all set.
Never mind.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. If there's nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.